Time is seven o'clock. If anybody else joins us, I know we'll just welcome them right in. If the candidates can find their spot at the table. My name is Carrie Swetnum. I'm the president of the Liberty PTA Council. We are sponsoring the event tonight. Just a couple of housekeeping things. Wanted you to know that all of the candidates who have filed for our school board were invited tonight. We did hear from both Lori Tritz and Bruce Cantwell. They were not going to be able to make it. Lori Tritz had an unexpected funeral dinner that she felt that she needed to attend, and Bruce Cantwell had a previous engagement. So please know they were invited. I'm sure they would welcome any questions that you have for them via email or whatever. We do have the candidates listed in alphabetical order. We have the Missouri State PTA President-elect Dorothy Gardner to thank for organizing this event tonight. She is also the legislative chair for the PTA Council. And she's going to introduce some students who are going to help us out tonight. And you can see name tags up here if you have any notes or anything you want to take. Be sure you've got the notes written with the right candidate. So I think we should get going. Seven o'clock. We have students from both our high schools here tonight to help moderate the event. Megan Gardner from Liberty High School, Riley Payne from Liberty High School, and Dylan McCusker from Liberty North High School. There's also note cards with pens in the back if you have a question you would like to ask, if you want to write down and bring it up to me, and I will turn over them. They will explain how the form out will run tonight.
Okay. Well, as for timing, so each candidate will get a two-minute intro. And then for questioning, you'll get a two-minute answer. So we'll first ask Ms. Marie Graham, and we'll ask her first, then go down the line. And the next question, we'll start with Mr. Hubs. So that will be the format for the questioning. And we'll also do a gavel knock tap. So if you have one minute left, we'll knock once. If you have 30 seconds left, we'll knock twice. And if your time has elapsed, we'll knock three times. And then finally, at the end, once we are getting closer to the time, we'll have a two-minute closing.
Okay, I think we're ready to begin.
Okay. Okay. So the first question.
Oh, we'll start with Ellen.
Oh, the first. I hope we answered about that. We'll start with Ms. Marie Graham.
My name is Kim Marie Graham. And first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the PTA Council for this opportunity and the work that they do every single year to make this form happen. I think it's a valuable part of the electoral process. I am currently a member of the board. This is, I've just completed my first term. I'm married. I'm a parent to two girls who both attend Manor Hill this year. I have an education background, a bachelor's in communications and a master's in public administration. I'm also currently the only board member that's completed advanced board member certification through the Missouri School Board Association. And just yesterday, submitted my application for a master's level of certifications. Kind of excited about that. My work history, I did 15 years of HR with an international banking company and stayed home with my children for several years, and now have embarked in kind of a second career doing social media management for small businesses. The reason that I have chosen to spend my time working on the board is I really love this community. I really love this area. And I get a little emotional when I talk about it because I really do have a love for the work that I do. Amazing communities don't happen by accident. They happen from people putting in hard work, and the work that I've chosen to do is through the school board. And I really just want to see this community be successful and have successful kids who grow up here, go to school here, and come back and raise their families here as well.
I have to follow.
Come on. Maybe we'll get emotional, right?
You did a great job. And we'll now move to Mr. Hubs.
My name's Don Hubs. And my objective in running for the school board is to apply the knowledge I have from my business experience to hopefully improve and continue to improve the educational outcome for the students in the district. We have 11,800 students. I think it's a big responsibility, and I understand Kim being emotional, to help these children be successful. A quote I like, as Solomon Kahn said, "This isn't about graduation rates and test scores. It's about the things, it's about those things, what they mean to human lives. It's about the potential realized or squandered, dignity enhanced or denied." You know, when you look at it, some of the concerns I have is youth unemployment's at a 40-year-high. There's actually more, the unemployment rate among people 18 to 25 is worse than the unemployment rate between 65 and 75 now. First time in history that's happened. Student loans in 2013 exceeded a trillion dollars in the United States. So it's, there's more student debt now than there is credit card debt in the United States. The last time that happened, so you would say, the last time a lot of broke people borrowed money, we had something called the housing crisis. So that's kind of the concern of where we're going in the future. I have a couple charts I wanted to show real quick, and I'll run and get them. And they kind of explain what's going on in the district from a financial standpoint. And that's how I kind of analyze and look at things because I manage money for a living. I've managed money for a living for 20-plus years. And I spend most of my day looking at income statements and balance sheets, analyzing companies, and deciding what to buy and what not to buy. So let me run up over here real quick.
Got one minute.
I'm working on it. Going fast. Thanks, Jesse. First chart is from the, this is simply from the website, from Liberty School District. So it shows our budget this year, $130 million budget. And with 11,800 students, I like to look at this because that says we're spending $11,048 per student, which is a lot of money. The answer probably to a lot of our problems isn't to spend more money or to raise more money. We have to live within our means going forward. My vision in the long term.
Time was up.
Okay. Go ahead, Jesse.
All right. My name is Jesse Limekuler. I live locally, I have one child that goes to the Shoal Creek School, Shoal Creek Elementary. I have another child that will soon be going to Shoal Creek Elementary. I would like to thank my wife tonight. Tonight is our 14th anniversary, and she allowed me to come out and talk to you all instead of go out to anniversary dinner. We scheduled it for tomorrow, so we're good there. As far as my background, I went to William Joel College for schooling. I had a business and administration degree. I also have a master's in accounting information systems I got at UMKC. I worked in IT for about 12 years. And then the past four years, rough, four and a half years, I've been running our family winery here in Liberty. So it's more a labor of love than something that you make a lot of money off of, but that's okay. Much like the school board for that matter. As far as what I want to do, I get a lot of feedback from teachers, both at the winery and both friends of mine. They're somewhat disgruntled with current direction of the district. They talk to me about possibly running because, you know, they felt like I would be someone that'd be able to afford their needs. And I want to create more of a transparency as far as between the board and what the teachers and support workers in the district deal with. I think sometimes they feel like they're a little left out with the current process. And I think that, you know, if we work a little harder to find a way to communicate with them more, even something as simple as, you know, I work on the weekends mostly at the winery, you know, maybe it's meet an hour or two a week with somebody, anybody, as long as we can get some type of visual contact with them and help them understand what's going on at the school board and in the district. I think that would be a good thing, so.
Ready?
Now hear from Ms. Marie. My name is Angie Reed. My husband and I moved to Liberty 20, I think it was 20 years ago, specifically because of the reputation that this district held. At that time, we had a third grader and a preschooler. My third grader has graduated and now works at Lily &amp; Schumacher as a speech-language pathologist. My preschooler has also graduated and is doing very well at the University of Arkansas as an architecture major. So their run-through Liberty Schools was very beneficial to them. I was very impressed throughout their entire school career at the caliber of teachers that they had in their classrooms, be they first-year teachers or experienced teachers. They were truly impressive. I myself am a retired teacher. I worked for 28 years. I started my teaching career in Europe. My husband was a military person, so I taught fifth grade there. Then we moved to Missouri where I taught K-6 elementary, special education, then to the high school. And I ended my career here in Liberty. I think my experience as an educator brings a unique perspective. For the last three to four years, I was trying to think how long I've been doing this, I regularly attended Board of Education meetings. And I think that gives me a very good background knowledge of what has been going on in the district and what we're looking at doing. For the past three months, I've been the only person not on the board who has attended all three meetings.
All right. We'll now move on to the questioning period, and we'll start with Ms. Marie Graham.
I'm sorry. It's actually Kim Marie. My first name is Kim Marie.
All right. Sorry.
It's okay.
It just looked like a dash.
It's okay.
What do you think is the biggest challenge Liberty Public Schools currently faces, and how do you feel that challenge can be addressed?
I'm just going to refer to my notes. That's a little bit out of order. I think we all know that growth has been a challenge for our district and will continue to be a challenge for our district. And part of that is because we have had, we have been such a strong district in the past, people continue to move here and want their children to be educated in our system. We have done, the board has done a lot of work in the last three years in putting together a strategic plan and a facility master plan that will address growth at least through 2019. And we will need to continue on the path with the facility master plan and strategic planning to ensure that we're addressing our growth needs. And growth is a given. Aside from that, I would say that our biggest challenge currently is that our superintendent is moving on. And we know that we need to fill that spot. And the board has worked diligently and put in significant hours in the last few weeks trying to do that work. And we are committed to finding the right person to lead our district forward. And as Jesse implied earlier, there, we do think that there's a little bit of work to do to rebuild trust, both with our people who work in the district and with our community. And so as we're looking for someone, we are keeping those things in mind. We do have work to do. So I think that those are probably what I would say, continue to focus on growth, making sure we have the right person for the future, and making sure that we're reaching out internally and externally so that we can all move forward together.
Did we do the same question, or did we?
Yes, we'll go straight down the line.
And the question again.
It was, what do you think is the biggest challenge LPS currently faces, and how do you feel that challenge can be addressed?
Well, I think the biggest challenge is going to be the budget going forward. The district, I think, over the next 15 years will average about $12 million a year in debt service. You know, to manage the debt service at the same time that the district's going to grow by sometimes 200 or 300 students a year is going to be a real challenge for the district. And at the same time that you get this tremendous growth and you're trying to pay the debt, you have things like Common Core that come down from the federal or state government that are basically initiatives that are going to lay on top of those. So I think the challenge is to keep education first, manage the budget, and then we've got to also deal with the fact that we've got to educate our children in a more cost-effective way, using technology combined with standard teaching, I guess you would call it. And so it's going to be kind of walking a tightrope. It's going to be a real challenge for the Liberty School District.
What I believe to be the biggest challenge is easily the leadership. I don't want to call it a crisis, but it's a big problem right now in the district. We just had a, obviously, a superintendent that was hired. A lot of people, both teachers and parents within the district, were very concerned, even when the last superintendent was hired, how quickly it happened. And, you know, those fears were only worsened by the fact that that superintendent quit a few months later, basically. So we really need to find a good leader this time, and I know the school board is in the process of doing that. I'm glad they're taking a little more time to flush out all the candidates that are available. But, I mean, you know, all the other things don't fall in place if you don't have a good leader in charge of the district. And I, my mother actually was in charge of the Blue Springs School District when I was in high school. And she was actually president of the school board at the time when those schools split, which is very similar to what we're having right now in the Liberty Schools. It was a huge district. It was split in two for the high schools. And a lot of that situation was mitigated, and the problems were mitigated because we had a superintendent that was there for 15-plus years. And he knew what he was doing. He had a good rapport with everyone in the school district and knew how to handle every crisis that came to us. So if we make a bad hire and we don't do the, you know, make sure that the candidate that's hired is someone that will be able to lead us for a long period of time and in the right direction, it doesn't matter what you do with the budget or any of these other things. It's not going to work.
And next, we'll go to Ms. Reed.
One of the biggest challenges I think LPS faces is, as Kim Marie said, the growth factor. We continue to grow because people come here, just as my family did, because it is a district with a good reputation. But within that, the bottom line is, we are here to educate children. And if those children are not well-prepared for graduation and what they're going to do after high school, then the school district as a whole, board member, patron, teacher, whatever, have failed. Those teachers are on the front lines of taking care of that piece of our district. And it is the entire reason LPS is here. Without those people in place and without the supports that they need to have, our children will suffer the consequences of that. So I think the biggest thing is, how best do we support those people that are in the classrooms, working with our students on a day-to-day basis? Because if they can't do their jobs, then our children are the ones, you know, we've entrusted them to the district, they're the ones who have them seven, eight hours of a day. And that's very important. So the growth and the piece where, how we support our teachers, how we educate our children, top, at the top of the list for the board.
Okay, thank you. For this next question, we'll now start with Mr. Hubs. And the question is, as a board member, what subcommittees are you passionate about, and how would your personal experiences further develop such committee work? I'll repeat the question one more time. So as a board member, what subcommittees are you passionate about, and how would your personal experiences further develop such committee work? And Mr. Hubs, you'd like to.
The two areas that I probably have the most interest in are curriculum. And specifically, curriculum that involves incorporation of technology with curriculum that evolves into what's called self-based learning, which a lot of the high school kids are learning about. You know, the old Prussian style of teaching, we call it, where a teacher stands up in front of the classroom and lectures to the class, dates back to 1803, and the Russian, when the Germans and the French had a standoff in the war, the Germans went home and said, "We have to find a way to educate children more seriously." And that system's pretty much remained in place ever since then. But what tends to work better with young people today is a system that incorporates both teachers, and they're more important than ever, along with self-paced, computer-based learning, which is what we're doing at Epic and what we're trying to do at the high school. These are the kind of innovations that are happening at the best school districts in the United States, and now they're happening at Liberty. So I'm fascinated by how we can apply that. Secondly is the budget again, which I, it's going to be a challenge. How do we keep ourselves out ahead of this wave of students that continue to move to the school district? How do we build schools in a cost-efficient way? How do we watch every dollar that's not allocated for teachers to make sure that we have enough money left over to pay and fund the teachers we need to run the district?
Now, Mr. Limekuler.
At the risk of being a copycat, I'm going to go with the same two that he said. The budget, I mean, we're both money people, so, you know, we're always, you know, managing, watching the bottom lines and that kind of thing. So, you know, that interests me a great deal. The curriculum, a little bit different reason. I'm happy to see some of the curriculum come in as far as self-paced stuff on the computers. Like I said, I was an IT person for 12 years, but I do have some concerns about making sure that the teacher remains the primary teacher of our students and not the IT. I think IT is a great support tool, although I do think there's some areas in the district that have some needs for improvement as far as the IT tools. I've gone into some of the schools and actually seen some of the work being done. And I think in some cases, the teachers have been given the technology, but they don't have all the tools and software within to actually use that technology as it's supposed to be used. So I think a little, whether it's support or training, whatever that needs to be, I think something needs to be done to make sure that those teachers are reaching their maximum potential as far as using that support software goes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Limekuler. And now moving to Ms. Reed.
During the past year and a half, I have been involved in the Vision 2020 Committee. That is something that the district has put together that has discussed. We discussed last year the information that was put out with the levy. We're in the process of looking at service learning. That committee is a committee made up of patrons who give the district feedback on some things that are coming down the pike. I was also, for the four years before I retired, involved with Team Liberty, which is a group of staff, administration, board members, administration people, non-certified staff members that get together and discuss salaries, budget issues, welfare issues, insurance issues, a lot of money things. And that taught me a lot about school finance, things that I didn't already know. And on top of that, another committee or another interest that I have is professional development for teachers. If we're going to continue to expect them to do things that are new to them, they need to have the ability to learn about those things so that they can be properly implemented in the classroom.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Reed. And now moving to Ms. Graham.
As Angie said, there is a standing committee, the Team Liberty Group, that works on employee salary and welfare issues. I've been a member of Team Liberty for the past three years. And I've received feedback from other members of the committee that the combination of human resources experience and my board perspective has been invaluable on that team. The 10 years, three years, so I would like to continue that work. But we also rotate board members, so if there's another board member who would like that opportunity, then I have to give it up. I also was a part of the elementary innovations team that worked on designing and developing the plan for Epic. And for that, I was able to bring a parent perspective, which I bring to all board work, and have done my work in social media, so I have perspective there. And also as a board, we've done a lot of thinking about the future of customized learning, what that looks like, and was able to bring that to Epic as well.
All right. This time, we'll start with Mr. Limekuler. All right. Some metro districts are expanding their early childhood programming, thus providing more district financial support to these programs. Given your current understanding of the Liberty Early Childhood Programming, what is your opinion of this?
I'll repeat it one more time.
Yep. Some metro districts are expanding their early childhood programming, thus providing more district financial support to those programs. Given your current understanding of the Liberty Early Childhood Programming, what is your opinion of this?
I think the district program as it is, is a good program. I'm not sure we need to expand it at this point. I think the district has a lot to handle. I think there's a lot of options within the community for private early childhood learning. And I think as a district, I think it's okay to offer what we have thus far, but expanding it to a bigger proportion, I'm not sure that I'd agree with that. I think that, I think it's okay where we're at right now. Further, I feel like it would put more of a stress on the budget. I don't feel like it's a position that necessarily we as a district should be working with. I feel like from elementary through high school, I think we're good at that. Let's stick with that and maybe leave the rest of that to the private community as a whole.
Ms. Reed?
The one thing I wasn't sure about when I initially read this question, being a special ed teacher with the background, I wasn't sure if they were referring to the special ed services that were being offered at the Early Childhood Center or the Title I funding. The district currently fully funds, uses their Title I funding to fully fund that program. And that is a big decision for the district to use those funds specifically to assist in that program. There are nine to 10 Title I classrooms currently at the Early Childhood Center. The Early Childhood Center also does special education, and there are three and a half classes currently in place that deal with the special ed students. So I'm not sure what exactly they wanted to discuss expanding. At this point, I know that this is the time of the year, from my experience, that lots of kids start, you start hearing about children who will be coming into the program. And so I would need to get more information regarding, what do you want to look at expanding? Because I feel that nine to 10 classrooms, fully funded by the district, at this point, that's not costing the district. That is funding that is, that is coming into the district specifically for that program.
Ms. Graham?
Well, as Angie said, we do have both our Title I programs and our existing Early Childhood Center. And both are very successful. We do see children be very successful going through those programs. Both of my children went through Parents as Teachers. And when I think about expanding early childhood, I think about the cuts that we've had to make to Parents as Teachers programs and how valuable it is to be able to identify parent involvement, parent engagement, and early identification of children who may need special services later. And if Governor Nixon is able to fulfill his promise to fully fund the formula so that we actually receive the $4 million that we don't get every year, I would love to see a part of that go into expanding Parents as Teachers to previous levels.
And Mr. Hubs?
Yeah, and I'm on the same page with Angie. When I first read the question, we didn't understand, did it apply to early childhood intervention in education or what I would call preschool? So to early childhood education as we have it in Liberty today, you know, as a parent of a special needs child, I'm a huge proponent of early identification and testing intervention on children with special needs. Research shows that the earlier you start working with those kids that have special needs, the better the outcomes at the end. I'm just not a huge proponent of taxpayer-funded preschool, but, so that's why I say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hubs. And for this next question, we will start with Ms. Reed. The question is, one in five children are dyslexic. Eighty percent of all children in Missouri Special Education are undiagnosed dyslexics. What would you do to offer early testing for dyslexia in our district? What programs and training would you promote for class teachers and special ed teachers to help these students and their families? And I'll repeat that one more time.
Got it.
Oh, you got it?
It's right here.
Okay.
I'm good to go. I am, by training, a special education teacher, and that's what I did for the last 25 years of my career. Dyslexia, at this point, my understanding, is in the field of special education. That is a medical diagnosis, and at this point, it's not something that schools can test for. Now, my understanding is also, there is a piece of legislation in Missouri to change that and bring it to the school level. And if that were the case, having been a teacher, having been a special educator, having worked with many regular educators, that is going to require some professional development for the classroom teacher. That is something that all teachers know about, but how well they deal with it varies from teacher to teacher based on what their background experiences are, what types of students they've encountered, how severe the dyslexia was in any given child. That really varies. And so there's not a pat way to fix that. But I strongly feel that getting the information out to the teachers, working with them on strategies to help include those children, make sure those children are successful, make sure they enjoy their education. Because so many dyslexics struggle with education. They don't like being in school. It makes it more difficult for them to run the race all the way through high school graduation. And that's, we want our children to be successful. So what things need to be in place in a classroom to help those teachers out?
Thank you, Ms. Reed. We will now move to Ms. Graham.
Well, as Angie said, this is a hot topic currently in the legislature. And the state of Missouri currently does not recognize dyslexia as an eligibility category for sped services. And there are changing definitions. And the other thing to keep in mind is that dyslexia doesn't just look like this. There's a wide range of different challenges that can be called dyslexia or the reading disability. So it is a challenge in the district. It doesn't mean that we don't know anything about it or that we don't do anything about it. We have people in the district who are dyslexia experts, have specialized training, specialized certification. And we do have multiple teachers across the district with master's degrees specifically in reading. So they're able to support children with the knowledge that they have. And they're also able to support other teachers. We collaborate in sharing all that knowledge. I think what's most important as a board member is, I'm not a sped expert, I need to be listening to people who are so that we can provide the right resources. to be listening to people who are, so that we can provide the right resources, the right structure, the right support for classroom teachers, just as Angie said, the right professional development, so that the teachers who are interacting with kids every day can identify and implement the right interventions for all kids regardless of diagnoses.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. And we'll now move to Mr. Hubs.
One in five is a huge number to deal with. Another number is one in 68 children are diagnosed with autism now. We need to go about identifying these disabilities as soon as we can so that we can help these kids catch up and keep up with the other kids. There is evidence-based processes already in place that can help these kids succeed. The district really doesn't need to invent the wheel. There's other districts throughout the state of Missouri and the United States that do an excellent job. And right now, it's kind of interesting because Nixon Missouri is piloting a program to work with dyslexic children. I think they were the pilot for Epic also, weren't they not?
They have a similar stuff.
Yeah. Texas has great programs to work with special needs kids. We were down there this weekend. But I just believe communication between the parents and the district needs to continue to improve in regards to special needs kids and their handicaps.
Thank you, Mr. Hubs. And we will now move to Mr. Langkour.
I think, I think a lot of the teachers that are at the school district, I think they already can, I don't want to say diagnosis is the right word, but they can see some of the situations that pop up. I know, having my child in kindergarten and now first grade, she's had kids in her class that, you know, have these kind of, you know, situations with dyslexia and even autism as he was talking about. And I think more than anything, the teachers need support from the staff around them. The teachers, a lot of them can see the early signs of these situations. And it's just a matter of getting those students in the right position to succeed. And, you know, if that involves further testing, if it involves, you know, moving them to a different situation where they have a teacher that can specialize more with them, you know, whatever that might be. I don't, I don't think there's a whole lot of changes that need to be made, generally speaking, to what we're already doing. I think that the staff that we have in our teaching positions are very well-equipped to understand the situation and point out the early problem areas. And then after that, you know, move them on to where they can be taken care of as their situation needs.
All right. And this time we will begin with Ms. Graham. And the question is, LPS is aligning its curriculum to the Common Core. How do you feel the implementation of Common Core State Standards Initiative is going to affect the students of LPS?
It's interesting, we talked about HOPUT a little bit earlier, and Common Core really is across the nation. There are a lot of, there are a lot of questions, there's a lot of motion, there's a lot of misunderstanding. And I'm not going to answer all of those, all of those things, I'll just answer the question. But I would say that the Common Core standards, the expectations for learning that we have are not new to this district. We have been working on implementing the standards and what we expect kids to be learning since I've been on the board for at least three years. And I will say that in the state, we have been ahead of the curve. It's not, we flipped the switch and Common Core is here now. It's a multi-year, multi-level process. And we have already been holding kids to higher standards. I recently had a conversation with a family that moved here from Iowa, and they, when they got here, they were surprised at how much more challenging it was for their kids. And that's not to say that it's too challenging. I think we, one of the problems with the Common Core that we need to kind of see how it plays out is that the standards and the assessments may or may not be developmentally inappropriate. And I think that that will continue to, it'll be something that we will need to continue to consider. But when we talk about what effect will Common Core standards or assessments have on our kids, I think compared to other kids, they're going to do fairly well because we're already expecting them to achieve.
Well, I spent the last couple of days reading about Common Core and everything, you know, because it's a new program. Common Core is another federally mandated program, state push program, you know, of standardized testing, standardized books, standardized education. It just doesn't sound comfortable to a lot of us when everything's standardized. You know, my concern about Common Core, Fordham Institute, which I was reading this afternoon, is one of the groups that backs Common Core and pushes it. And so when they analyze Common Core, they say, it's no big deal. It's easy to implement. It shouldn't cost more than $250 per student on average in each school district to implement because you have new tests, you have new booklets, you have to train teachers. But $250 times 11,800 kids is $2.9 million. So when you just say it's no big deal, it's $2.9 million to Liberty School District, and new funding is a big deal. Some of that would be offset because we're not going to buy other school books that we had or other programs. But to me, I'm not that comfortable with the program. I think the state of Missouri is voting today whether they're going to continue to push it or not. There was two bills in the House today, so we'll see what happens.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Langkour?
And just to add to his point about the $250, that's assuming that the budget that they've created is correct. So as far as Common Core, I think generally as a district, I don't think we should be too terribly concerned about it. I mean, in the end, like Kim Murray said, I mean, our standards, I feel like, are above what are being required by those Common Core standards in most situations. I feel like some of the things that my kids are learning are ridiculous compared to what I was learning when I was in kindergarten and first grade. I was an idiot compared to them, so maybe I still am. But as far as the Common Core goes, I mean, we'll have to, you know, deal with those battles on the road as we go. But I mean, as a district, I'm not concerned at this point until they put something on us that requires a lot of extra budgetary constraints in the form of additional spending or something where they just put in a program that just seems ridiculous, you know, to the point where it's counterintuitive towards what the kids are learning right now, that they're actually, you feel like they're learning less than they did before, so.
All right. And now we'll hear from Ms. Reed.
Having been a teacher in the district for the seven years before I retired, only been a year for that, Liberty, and it has always impressed me how Liberty has done this, Liberty works to stay ahead of the curve. And the standards that they're requiring in Common Core are not new to Liberty. We have, in Liberty, as teachers, always expected our children to, to be good at what they do. We want to teach them the things that are important. We want to teach them how to be good citizens. All of those things that, that we all learned, plus the multitude of new information that has come to be since I know I was in school. And so the Common Core standards, I think, are a way to perhaps level the playing field across the nation to make sure that all of our students in this country are, are at least learning the basics. In Liberty, I still think we go above and beyond that. And I think it will be a program that, whether we call it Common Core or pick another name, because education does that. They swing from one side to the other, and I'm sure Common Core was something else 10 years ago. It's just been reinvented and renamed and given a new push.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. And the next question, we will start with Mr. Hubs. And the question is, as a school board member, you are expected to help set goals for the future of LPS. What are your goals for LPS in the next five to 10 years?
You know, you don't set a goal you can't hit. And I thought about this question, and my answer is I don't see why your goal wouldn't be to be the number one academic school district in the state of Missouri. It seems to me that if you set that as your goal and you don't hit that goal, at least you're trying to get as close as possible. So I would believe we would do everything within our power economically, with the curriculum, et cetera, to become the number one school district in the state of Missouri academically.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hubs. And Mr. Langkour?
You said the goal's within five, next five to 10 years?
Yes. So what are the goals for, what would you set as goals for the next five to 10 years?
Yeah, I think one of the very important things that we'll have to deal with in the district going forward is dealing with the growth and having a plan to deal with that growth. I know just in our area, over on the south end of Liberty, where we have our business, they're getting ready to put through South Liberty Parkway. And that's going to open up just a whole new level of the city. I mean, that area is not accessible right now relatively speaking because you've got to go a long ways to get there from either way. Once we put in the South Liberty Parkway, there's going to be new businesses, there's going to be new homes. Where we are, where there's a big patch of grass right now, we hope to keep it a patch of grass and keep it beautiful, but it may not end up being that way. And so I feel like there's going to be a lot of facility planning that's going to need to happen. And it's going to have to be new facilities, to be honest. I know a lot of the planning currently is trying to keep, you know, some of the existing facilities, increase their capacity, what they can handle, so that we don't have to create new facilities. But there is absolutely zero facilities on the south end of Liberty on 291 and going south. And so I feel like it's a big growth need that we're going to have to look forward to.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Langkour. And we'll now move to Ms. Reed.
I think one of the biggest challenges, as everybody seems to state, is the amount of growth we've had in the district. I think the district is looking at, I mean, the committees I've been involved in, the conversation at board meetings that I've listened to, has been about how we're going to manage that growth without bankrupting our district, costing us tons of money that we don't have. Because the, the state puts, puts limits on what we can spend to build new facilities. We've kept those out. We can't, you know, we're kind of at an impasse right now where we can do new buildings and with, with money that doesn't come from a levy. And levies and bond issues are a little bit different in school funding. But, but how to do that, how to use existing facilities, how to use, as the district is beginning to look for, facilities that perhaps aren't owned by the district, that can be utilized by the district for, for educational purposes, how to partner with the community in, in what they're doing and, and deal with that so that the amount of new building that we have to do, apart from the pieces that we're adding on to all of our existing buildings, with a few exceptions, so that we can continue to do that. And I think that's going to be very important on how we look for and find and implement and use all of that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Reed. And we'll now move to Ms. Graham.
This has already been said several times, but clearly we need to continue to be very intentional in our plans for how we deal with growth. We have an existing strategic plan, as I said earlier, and a facility master plan. And we need to continue looking forward and continue supporting that plan as we, as we continue to grow. And we need to continue preparing kids for their futures beyond graduation. And when we think about what we're doing every day, it's preparing them for life after graduation that needs to continue to be our focus. And in the past three years, we have strengthened our relationships with community partners significantly. There's still work to do, there always is. But I would like to see some of those partnerships result in some meaningful developments for our community at large. And the last thing I would say is that the thing that kind of keeps me awake at night is that we do have places where our academic achievement is not where it should be. And it should be, based on our socioeconomic demographics, based on the money that we have to spend. I'm getting emotional again. But we, our graduation rate is low compared to similar districts, and we need to figure out why that is and get more kids across the stage. And based on our socioeconomic demographics, based on our community engagement, based on the talent of families and kids in our district, based on the talent of our teachers, we should be getting national recognition for the work that we're doing here. And that's what I'd like to see.
All right. And now we will begin with Mr. Langkour. This question will be in the back at this from one of our audience members, so if you need, I can repeat it. As you know, Liberty Public Schools has initiated the program of giving every high school student a laptop computer. A recent study found that students today spend on average 80 hours per week in front of a screen. Another study found that students as a whole are addicted to social media and distracted as never before. Do you feel as a prospective board member that more time in front of a screen, as Liberty Public Schools is advocating, is wise? Why or why not?
That's a very good question. I actually, I think there's a place for computers. I'm, I know they've currently implemented the system where they're giving computers to all the kids. I know as a person who's worked in IT that even with adults in cubicles, it is very hard to monitor those people. And putting it in front of kids and trying to monitor that whole situation is another whole level, and I don't envy that person in one bit. That said, I think we can offer those options just as well for them in the school without actually giving them a laptop. Obviously, the program's already been implemented. I'm not going to go in with any intention of directly changing it or revoking it immediately. But I just, I think, I think it should be in a little more secure situation. Those kids, if they want to use those computers for other situations, they're, they're going to have their own computers, honestly, most of them. And if they don't, they're going to have access to them. I'm not sure that we should be in the business of giving computers to every single kid. I know there are needs for some of those kids. Obviously, some of the kids can't afford a computer or their families can't afford computers. I feel like the district can offer those kids options to be available for them to have the opportunity to use a computer without giving a computer to every single child.
All right. Thank you. And Ms. Reed?
The use of computers in the classroom and, and understanding that all the high school students have their own laptop computer and knowing that they are piloting that at the middle level and even at an elementary classroom, my question would be more dealing with, I don't know that I would say that students need more time in front of a laptop. I would say that probably what they're doing with the laptop would be more important to me. You can spend an hour in front of a laptop and get nothing accomplished. But if you don't know how best to use that laptop, then as they said in several vision meetings, it becomes a $1,000 pencil. And that's not the purpose of those laptops. The students who are using them, I'm sure that the teachers are on the biggest learning curve at this point in time. Because you can't, in a classroom full of 30 to 40 students, monitor where they are every single second of your classroom time. However, at some point, looking at what they're doing with those, the product of work that comes from those, how successful they continue to be with those, is what I think we need to look at. Not necessarily how much time they're spending, but the quality of their work that comes from spending that time on the computer. Yes, we're in a computer age. There's, they're not going to go away. They're here to stay. We all have our own little phones. Kids just have bigger phones now called laptops.
Thank you. And Ms. Graham?
I'm going to try not to repeat anything that's already been said about this. It's a fierce topic. I think one of the most important things that we can be doing is making sure that teachers understand, parents understand, that it isn't a $1,000 pencil, and it's not intended to replace a teacher. A computer is a tool for learning. And it's, it is surprising how many families in the district don't have a computer at home or don't have internet access. And it is a way to decrease that disparity between who has and who does not. But that said, teachers also need to have the professional development to use it as a tool and have the latitude to use it as it makes sense in each classroom. It isn't best used the same way in every single classroom, every single day, or for every single student. And it is okay to say, it's time to shut it. And that is also a life skill that we all probably need some practice with sometimes. And it's a reality for the future, but there's a balance between when you use it and when you don't. So.
Yeah, I'm going to ask the teachers in the district to do one thing with your computers every day for me. That'll save me, because the most dreaded words that ever come out of a child's mouth when you're at home at night is, Dad, could you help me with my math? Okay? So if you have computers in every classroom, there's that 10 minutes during every classroom when the teacher says, I'm going to teach you or show you right now how to multiply fractions. And here's how you do it. And see, that child gets, sometimes they get that, sometimes they don't get it. And they come home at night and they go, Dad, can you show me how to multiply fractions? And so you go on Google and you try and remember how to do it, and you show them, they say, that's not what our teacher showed us. They do it differently than that. So if we're going to have millions of dollars worth of computers in the school district, 10 minutes a day, when you're saying, here's what you need to know tonight for your homework, have one of the kids video that, put it on a website or somewhere so as parents, we can all pull it up at night and look at it. Secondly, if the kid doesn't get it, then mom and dad are gone that night, high school children or whatever, they can pull up that video, that 10-minute video, and watch it five or six times and they can get it. But I'm in favor of everybody having computers at home who can't afford it or if the school district has to buy them, I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hubs. And we will now, we will now end with a final question, and this will start, oh, excuse me. Mr. Langkour, did you?
I did the first one last.
Okay. So we'll now end with a final question with Ms. Reed. And the final question is, with the need of more classrooms and teachers, is the over $2 million spent on after-school activities a wise decision?
When I read that question, my thought process was, after-school activities would be what? What are, what... What's encompassed in after-school activities? Are we discussing athletics, which, you know, at the high school level, are we talking fine arts programs at the high school level? Are we talking after-school clubs? Are we talking after-school activities? Are we talking about Kidzone? I mean, what activities are they specifically dealing with? And, and so I struggle to answer that question only because I don't know what they're referring to. I do know Kidzone is a fully parent-funded, yes, payroll runs through the district, but parents support that by paying tuition and fees. There are booster clubs for high school athletics and the fine arts that do a lot, a ton of stuff, to support students involved in those activities. As far as paying to play, rental of instruments, I know that the district also has that in place. After-school clubs typically are done on the teacher's volunteer time. They want to be involved with their students and get their students involved in something that hooks them into school. And to my knowledge, that doesn't cost the district, that's, that's free time from the teacher, and what the teacher wants to put into it. So I, I don't like to skirt an issue, but on the same hand, I'm not sure what directly they're talking about with the $2 million.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Reed, and we'll now move to Ms. Graham.
I had the same struggle with this question that Angie did, so I chose to interpret it as athletics and extracurricular activities. And I think it clearly, with any program, we always need to be looking at expenses, and are there times when we can be spending more efficiently, or can we be using space differently? And that's kind of a given, that we need to make sure that we're, we're spending appropriately on any program. That said, our strategic plan, based on the significant community input, is that we inspire and equip all learners to discover their voice and unlimited potential. And if we're talking about extracurricular activities, that is one of the ways that children find their voice. And just, as a personal example, a good friend of ours, their child was recently accepted to Juilliard. So literally finding his voice through fine arts programs. And business leaders tell us that kids learn valuable life lessons in athletics, in extracurricular programs. They learn the power of working in a team, they learn how to reach a goal. It's not just being involved in sport or another program. And it's also, there are also ways that we keep kids engaged in school. And sometimes, an extracurricular is what, the only thing that keeps a kid engaged in school, and keeping kids engaged is how we ensure that they walk across the stage of graduation.
Thank you, Ms. Graham, and we'll now move to Mr. Hubs.
I interpret it the same way as extracurricular activity, and, and $2 million's a lot of money, but I think, and I think back to my high school days, back in the 1940s, and the only reason, most of the time that I studied, is because I wanted to play football and run track. And so I had to get grades, you know, significant that my parents would let me play football and run track. I don't think if that motivation had been there, I don't know if I would have had any interest in school at that time. So that got me through high school, and then somehow you make it through college, but part of that is, when you learn to be competitive, and you play competitive sports in high school, then you arrive at college, and maybe you're not as equipped as some of the kids who focused academically, but the one thing you do have, or two things, you have discipline, which you learn playing sports, and you have motivation, and you know how to, to challenge yourself and succeed, so I, I do think it's worth the money.
Thank you, Mr. Hubs, and we'll now move to Mr. Langkooler.
Yeah, $2 million, honestly, to me, when we're speaking about a budget as large as our district, doesn't seem like that much to me. There's a lot of life lessons that are learned in the different extracurricular activities. You know, I was big into music when I was in school, I did orchestra and choir, and that was my thing, and that's what I loved, and that was what kept me coming back to the school. My daughter is very talented, being an artist, so she loves that kind of stuff, and it makes no sense to me, but she loves it, she does stuff that I could never do. Similarly, with sports, I, I wanted to be an athlete, but I never was, because I didn't achieve that level of, you know, ability, well, basketball is what I enjoyed. But I could see how, you know, there's a lot of my friends that enjoyed and kept coming back for that, and, you know, there's a lot of leadership qualities that you learn in there, there's a lot of the ability to interact with other people. A lot of those lessons are honestly not learned right now because we have, what we were talking about before, all this social media, all the computers and all those kind of things. We're focused on things where we can somewhat control our situation. And, you know, honestly, I work at the winery, I deal with a lot of brides and stuff like that, there is no control when those ladies come in and they want the wedding just how they want it. These kids need to learn those kind of lessons that happen in those extracurricular activities, and they're not all fun lessons. As we all well know, we've always dealt with those situations when we were younger. But if they don't learn those lessons, they won't know how to deal with it when they're adults either, and they won't be able to succeed like they would otherwise.
All right, thank you. We will now move to the two-minute conclusions, and we will begin with Ms. Graham.
I'm not going to take the full two minutes. I think there's lots of information out there about why we're running, Trubin has done a very nice article, and I have a webpage, and I'm not going to reiterate all of that. I would like to thank everyone who's in this room tonight, and everyone who chooses to watch on Channel 18. I have a deep appreciation for people who choose to be educated and engaged in what's happening with our schools, and I see several familiar faces out there, people I've had long conversations with, and, and I know all of you are only here because you're interested in what's happening, so thank you for that. And I would just like to say, anyone who would like to have another, further conversation with me, I welcome that all the time, I love to talk about what's going on in the school, so please contact me through the district's email address, it's out on the website, and I would love to talk to each and every one of you more.
All right, thank you, Ms. Graham. Mr. Hubs?
I gotta get my chart, hopefully I get over there real quick. So if you take, the Liberty, and I made this one bigger for all of us sight-challenged people, if you take our budget, $130 million divided by 11,800, that's how much we spend per student, and then you say we average 26 students per class, which may or, may not be right, but it's close. We spend about $287,000 on a classroom, so when you walk in the door of the classroom, you're going to say, there's $287,000 being spent in there this year. The thing that stands out to me, because I crunch numbers for a living, of that, salaries and benefits are $205,000, okay? They're $287,000. And so any time there's a cut in any school district, the first thing they say is, well, let's cut teachers, right? Let's cut teacher salaries, right? Well, that $205,000, only $56,000 of that is teachers' salary and benefits. So if we get to a point where we have to cut in the Liberty School District, I want you to remember back to this chart, and remember that $56,000 in teachers, that's the one person we got to have in the classroom, right? $148,000 of the cost in that classroom is salaries not related to teachers. So that, to me, as a budget person, is where you dig and you look. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hubs, we will now move to Mr. Langkooler.
First, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I'm pleased to see that there's as many people at the event, it's a wonderful thing. Second, I, I have met everybody that's up here on the board. Kim Marie, I haven't had any long conversations with yet, but my wife has, I had a very long conversation with her at an event at the winery, and she filled me out like Kim, so I don't think you're going wrong with any of the candidates up here. I have not met the two that aren't here, so I can't speak for them, but. I, I appreciate that there's as much interest in the district. I'm obviously interested in the district because I put my name in the pot to run for the school, school board. I'm excited about the possibilities in the district, there's a lot of things that are going to happen in the coming years that you all should be excited about as well. As I said before, I'm very excited about the possible, possible leadership opportunity that we have as far as the superintendent goes. I'm hopeful that we find a candidate that will, you know, meet our needs for the next 10 to 15 years, and we don't have to keep revisiting this every two to three years. I think that would be fantastic, and it would be great for the district. I hope, I hope everyone gets out to vote, and I hope you have a great week.
Thank you, Mr. Langkooler. We will now hear from Ms. Reed.
In conclusion, because I'm the last person speaking, I really, one of the biggest reasons I wanted to run for a school board candidate is because of the things I've experienced as a teacher, as a person involved in my field, as a person who's involved with the district, as I said earlier. I've come to board meetings, both at this district and previous districts where I've worked, for many years. At this district, it's been the last three or four. I do that because I feel that it's important as a teacher, as a parent, as a patron, that I know what's going on in the district in which I live, and where I am having my children educated. I can't tell you how important I feel that is. I'm passionate about that. I think that it's important that the people who hold this position are thinking of your children and their best interest. I went into teaching, now I'm going to pull a Kim Marie. I went into teaching because I am passionate about children, and I am passionate about working with them. I went into special education because I'm passionate about children being successful. And I am passionate that teachers be represented, and I really think that on this board, my voice as an educator is unique and well-needed. And I think with all of the things I've done in the district, I think I can hit the ground running and be an important person, an important decision-maker, and helping out with what's currently in place.
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Great, well, thank you all for coming. I'm sure these guys have other things to do, but they might be able to stand around for a couple of minutes if you didn't get your question asked. Thank you, good night.